Good evening. We'll call the meeting, the January 11th, 2012 meeting, the Edina City Planning Commission to Order. Jackie's not here. Carrie, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Cherkowski. Commissioner Platter. Commissioner Rock. Commissioner Potts. Commissioner Schroeder. Commissioner Forrest. Commissioner Shear. And Chair Grabel.
Here.
Oh, and Commissioner Staunton.
Thank you. We're all here. First item of business is the approval of the meeting agenda. You received that. Any questions, comments, changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve. Second? All in favor say aye. Next item is approval of the consent agenda. The first item there is the minutes of the December 14th, 2011 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any corrections, or additions, or changes to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Is there a second? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. This is the community comments section of the meeting. During community comment, we invite residents to share new issues or concerns that have not been considered in the past 30 days by the commission, or which are not slated for future consideration. So that would mean that none of the issues on tonight's agenda would be appropriate for community comment. However, we would appreciate if any citizens have comments, if they would like to address the commission, please come forward. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Are there any individuals who wish to address the commission during the community comments section? Going once? Okay, there are no community comments. The next item on the agenda is public hearings. So you know, during public hearings, we ask for testimony after the city staff members make their presentations. If you wish to testify on the topic, you're welcome to do so, as long as your testimony is relevant to the discussion. We ask that you follow the following guidelines: testimony is limited to three minutes, and please try not to repeat remarks that have already been made. A comment is good in itself. It's not good just because it's repeated four times. So please take that into account. We're not trying to stifle discussion. It's not, we don't want to hear all the points of view. It's just that, in the interest of time, and everyone's time, there's no point to repeat the same comment over and over again. That said, the first item on the public hearing agenda is Issue B-11-14, a 5.7-foot front yard setback variance at 5805 Johnson Drive in Edina. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The subject property is located at 5805 Johnson Drive. It is on the east side of Johnson, as highlighted, south of Grove. This is an aerial photograph of the area. It's showing the subject property, which is the middle lot here, the house to the north, that is along Grove and Johnson, and then the property just south of it. What you'll notice is that the subject property is at the minimum lot depth of 120 feet, so it's a sizable lot. However, the lots along Johnson aren't terribly deep. The house has been built further back in the lot than the homes on either side. Both the home to the north and the south are closer to the front lot line. And also, the existing house is quite close to the north lot line, so there's quite a bit of space to the south. However, the house has been pushed far back on the lot, and then close to the north lot line. The applicant is proposing to add on to the existing home to include a family room, master bedroom, laundry, and office above on the south side of the home, and a garage expansion to the north. This is the existing house, as you see it from the street, along Johnson. This is the property to the north. You'd be standing on the corner of Grove and Johnson. This would be the house directly to the south. This is an updated survey of the property. The house outline is the lighter outline that you see here. The front wall of the house is 54 feet back from the front lot line. You'll notice that the home to the north is 42 feet back. The house to the south is 35 feet back. So the subject home was built further back on the lot, also much closer to the north lot line than the south lot line. The existing attached garage is five feet away from that north lot line, which is the minimum side yard setback required for a garage. This is the proposed addition to the south. It's a sizable addition, but there's plenty of room to add on to the south side of the house. None of those improvements require a variance. However, to the north side, where the garage is, the property owner would like to widen up the garage. Currently, the front wall of the garage is a little over 15 feet wide. They'd like to add two feet on to the width of the garage, and then 10 feet on to the back of the garage. The width of the garage would require a two-foot side yard setback variance, because it's currently at the minimum five feet, so there would be a three-foot setback provided by that new sidewall of the garage. And then, a 5.7-foot rear yard setback would be required to accomplish a 19.3-foot setback to the rear easterly lot line. The minimum required is 25 feet. This is the existing floor plan of the house, and what you'll notice is that the garage, which is on the north side of the house, has a side door entry hall area, which narrows the width of the garage and the door opening, garage door opening, in the front to a little over 15 feet, which is quite narrow for a two-car garage. This is the proposed addition. All of this on the south side conforms. The area in question is on the north side, with the garage expansion is. It would be a two-foot extension along that north wall, and then a 10-foot extension towards the back. Going back to the previous slide, what you'll notice is there is this side entry door. There's a window along that north wall of the house, and then on the second floor, there's also a window above. Part of the reason why they did not want to go forward with the garage, because they do have the opportunity to do that, since the house is so far back on the lot, they didn't want to obstruct that hallway, the doorway, and the existing windows. These are the new elevations, showing the front of the house. There really is very little change to the garage elevation from the street. There will just be two feet added on to the width of it. The south side additions conform to the ordinance requirements. The north elevation does show that 10-foot extension towards the rear yard. And then, the rear elevation is a little hard to see, that this would be coming back further into the lot by 10 feet. These are photographs that were provided by the property owner. The back wall of the garage, what you'll notice is that there's an existing attached shed on the north side of the house, which is almost up to the lot line. That will be removed. The sidewall of the garage actually will only be two feet into where this shed currently is. The shed is much closer to the side lot line than the proposed garage sidewall. This is the existing backyard and rear elevation of the house. What you'll notice is that the neighbor to the north has a number of windows that are facing south. This would be the front elevation of the garage. Again, there's the shed that will be removed when the construction of the garage takes place, and the width of it is widened. The primary issue is the proposed development reasonable for the site. Staff believes the proposal is reasonable for four reasons. The proposed use is permitted in the R1 single dwelling zoning district, and complies with the requirements, with the exception of the north side and rear yard setback. The additions are appropriate in size and scales for the lot, and the improvements will enhance the property and not detract from the neighbors' or neighborhood. The most impacted neighbor that is to the north has included a letter in your packet, indicated that they would prefer that the garage go further back into the rear lot instead of going forward, because they do have these south-facing windows that they do not want the views obstructed towards the street. The improvements will provide a reasonable use of the site to allow for a standard garage. Currently, the garage is too narrow to be considered a two-car garage. Generally, the Planning Commission has been supportive of variances to improve garages to enclose two cars to a three-foot side yard setback. The ordinance requires a minimum two-car garage per single dwelling unit. The existing width of the garage is substandard, and the variance would allow a more standard garage width. The additions are minimal and reasonable, given the deep front yard setback and minimal side yard and rear yard area available for expansion. Spacing between the garage sidewall and the home to the north will be 16 and 1/2 feet, and the spacing between the back wall of the garage and the home to the east will be approximately 80 feet. Staff does recommend approval of the variances. Approval should be based on and subject to the survey date stamped December 8th, 2011, and the building plans and elevation dates stamped December 8th, 2011, which were included in your packet. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Are there questions for staff, please? Commissioner Forrest?
Is there a minimum width for double garages that have the cars in them side by side?
Not by ordinance, but typically, we wouldn't issue a permit that would be narrower than a 20-foot wide garage for a double wide side-by-side garage.
And it looks like this one's about 19.6 feet throughout most of it, right?
Yes, it is still a bit narrow.
Is it possible to point out, I'm not clear, I can see, I'm not clear what windows it would be obstructed on the existing home by moving it forward instead of, or by changing the position?
It would be a window on the existing bedroom above on the second floor. There's a window on the main floor. And then, there's also a window and a door that is, a side door, that is adjacent to the garage, that they would like to keep. I don't know if I have a picture that'll show that.
So you want to move it forward, so it's toward covering the door and the one on the front of the house, right?
If they were to move it forward. They're going to be moving it back into the lot, so they don't want those obstructed windows. This is the area that they would not like to obstruct with it moving forward.
The neighbors have windows here that they want to keep unobstructed. I have a couple of questions, Chris. First, the shed, that shed is obviously non-conforming, right? I've got a question. I don't have a particular issue with moving, with extending the garage back, but it looks like for the side yard setback, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the issue seems to be this little, I'm trying to find, here we go, this little triangle, there we go, the little triangle where this outside side door is. And they want to preserve that, and that looks like it's about two feet wide, so they want to extend the garage out an additional two feet, whereas if they just took that out and had an interior door or something else, they wouldn't have to extend the side of the garage out two feet, and you could still have it, basically a 20-foot wide garage. Is that correct?
Yes, and I guess I would refer that question to the applicant as to why they would like to preserve that area.
I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the thing the right way.
Yes.
Okay. Other questions of staff? Okay, thank you. Would the applicant care to make a presentation?
Yeah, hi. Bill Dennison, the homeowner, 5805.
Okay.
On that small little alcove there, that is over the foundation part of where the well was originally built. So that would require modifying the foundation. If we widen the driveway, we would have to do something there with the foundation of the original house right there. So we were trying to avoid that.
Other questions of the applicant? Anything else you'd like to add? All right, thank you. Would anyone else wish to speak to this issue, the side yard and the rear yard setback Seeing no other comments, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? All in favor say aye. Okay, the hearing is closed. Now, let's, other comments, concerns, questions, issues here at the commission level? Mr. Carpenter?
I'll go ahead and jump in. Based on the staff report and the materials that have been furnished, quite frankly, I don't see this as an unreasonable proposal. I agree with staff that the variance that's being requested is reasonable. I understand that there is a concern about pushing the garage addition back, as far as it's gone, but I can also sympathetic to the homeowner, who perhaps is justifiably concerned about making changes that might impact the foundation unnecessarily. I think that's simply part of the give and take that is involved with two homes that are reasonably close and proximate to one another.
Other comments from the commission? Commissioner Forrest?
I'm just going to pipe up on this one and say that the one thing about this is that it seems like all of these changes are self-created. I mean, the position of the house is one thing, but it's not a topographical issue on the property. It can still meet its reasonable use, the way it's existing, even be remodeled to a certain extent. So I'm just pointing this out for part of our analysis here, so.
What is the commission's pleasure? Commissioner Carpenter makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I assume that motion is made subject to the staff report, the findings and the recommendations of the staff. Is that correct? Okay. It's been moved and seconded that Item B-11-14 be approved, subject to the conditions set forth. The findings and the conditions set forth in the staff report, it's been seconded. Is there further discussion on this issue? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is approved with one dissenting vote. The variance is approved. However, there is a two-week waiting period. People can appeal this decision. If you pass the two weeks, go forth and build. The next item on the agenda, matter 2011-0004-11B, final site plan, Children's Design Group, Primrose School of Edina, 7401 Metro Boulevard, Edina. Carrie?
Thank you, Chair Grabel, members of the commission. This property is located in the southwest quadrant of the city, at 7401 Metro Boulevard. It's located right along Highway 100, just north of 494. It's east, just east across the street of the new Public Works facility. You may recall, this past summer, 7401 Metro, this property here, did a subdivision to create the lot that we're looking at this evening. And in fact, when we considered that plat, this building was contemplated at that time. So the footprint was shown previously. So we're looking at development of this triangular-shaped parking area here along Metro Boulevard. The request requires a site plan review. What the applicant is proposing to build is a Primrose Daycare Center that would be located on the site. This is a rendering of what the building would look like. It would be constructed of brick and stucco with architectural shingled roof, and the applicant has a materials board over here, if the Planning Commission would like to take a look at some of those materials specifically. Access to the site would be gained off Metro Boulevard, as it exists today. This is a look at the placement of the new building on the site. The site would be fenced for security with an ornamental black picket fence. The rendering that we've got here doesn't show it all that well, but this is it, in this location here. So there would be a security fence around the daycare facility, and this would be the outdoor play equipment associated. Parking would be, there would be a shared parking arrangement. There would be no parking stalls created on the site. It would be a shared arrangement with that property to the south. The applicant has conducted a parking and traffic study to determine the impacts that this project would have on those two issues. So the primary issue for consideration of the Planning Commission this evening is, is this development reasonable for the site? Staff believes it is. It meets all of our minimum zoning ordinance requirements for a site plan review, in terms of setback, building height, et cetera. Landscaping, the applicant's proposing a, would, over-story trees around the perimeter. Based on the perimeter of the site, 22 over-story trees are required, and they're proposing, there's actually 24. There are two existing trees along the highway that I missed. So they would meet that requirement. There would be a under-story plantings that would be included along the entrance, off of Metro, and in front of the building. So there would be a complete complement to the over-story trees that are proposed. In regard to the parking, based on the existing building, the office building to the south, the six-story building, and the proposed daycare that would include up to 180 children and 20 teachers on the site. So the parking requirement for those two uses is 485 stalls. And the site plan that's proposed this evening would include 485 stalls. As we were going through the review of this, we weren't sure of the exact numbers within the daycare facility, and the applicant actually submitted a proof of parking plan to provide and show where additional stalls could be gained. It's not needed, as they meet the required parking, but the exhibit on the screen shows that they could include up to 506 stalls on the property. SPAC Consulting did the parking study for this site, and they concluded that 309 stalls are actually needed between the two uses, so we're still actually overparked on the site, as it would exist, as proposed. SPAC also did a traffic study that determined the impacts of the existing roadways, and that study concludes that the existing roadway system can support this proposal that you see before you this evening. Mike Spac of SPAC Consulting is here this evening and can answer any questions that you may have in regard to the parking or the traffic. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the project, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in the staff report, and I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Carrie. Questions for staff? Mr. Platter?
Carrie, do you know where they propose parking, what they're removing to do that? You know, the extra parking spots on your plan with the, it looks like there's, is there two landscape islands they're proposing to remove?
Correct.
If they need more parking spots?
Yeah, there would be two landscape islands here, and there would be an island in front of the building, located here, that they could remove, and also in here, where we saw that landscaping that's proposed. So they could add spaces in those areas. Correct.
Carrie, I have a question. In looking at these drawings, it appears that the front of this building, the front faces south, I gather.
Correct.
But it appears that that is right up against the lot line. Is there, apparently there's no issue with setbacks to that lot line?
There's not. For purposes of this property, we measure it from the property boundaries, and this is held in common ownership, and the zoning is the same on both sites. So we would measure from the perimeter of the 7401 site. So this would be, the required setbacks would be from the perimeter lot lines. And that side lot line that you're referring to would be located right here. No setback is required.
No, I'm talking about the southerly lot line.
This lot?
This lot, yeah, that lot line.
Right. And this property to the south, it has the same zoning, and would be held under the same ownership. So we measure the required setbacks from the perimeter of that tract.
From the whole tract?
Right.
Other questions of staff? Thank you. Would the proponent care to make a presentation?
Good evening. I'm Mike Brandt with MFRA, the engineer on the project, and I don't need to make a formal presentation. We agree with the staff report, and I'll stand for any questions of the commission.
Okay, was it Graham or Bram?
Brandt.
Grant?
Brandt.
Brandt.
Yeah.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Brandt. Questions of the proponent? I guess there are no questions.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Brandt. Would anybody else care to speak to this issue? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye. The public hearing is closed. We'll bring the matter up to the commission. Comments, What is your, what are your wishes? Commissioner Carpenter?
Jump in again. Again, I thought that the layout, the information in the staff report was complete, and I have, again, no problems with this development at all. If anybody that does have something, I'd be interested to hear it, because I did not see anything in here that caused me any pain. It seemed very reasonable.
Other comments? Commissioner Shear?
Just a curiosity question, in terms of just the long-term use of the property. I'm not familiar with the Primrose Schools. Our materials state that these are franchises. I'm assuming this would be a new franchise. It is not moving the Savage Edin Prairie It is not moving the Savage, Edin Prairie, Maple Grove, or any of the other locations?
Other questions, comments? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve this proposal based on staff review.
Motion's been made to approve based on the staff review, the findings, and the conclusions. Is there a second to that motion? It's been seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Chair, as part of that, do we want to take a look at the exterior materials as part of the approval process? I don't know if we want to dovetail that.
Sure. Mr. Grant, could you show us the exterior materials, please?
We can project them right on the. Here's pretty much what we have, is the lower portion of the building will be this stone material. This will be your fascium material, the hardy plank, which will match the, the color will also be matched with the stucco material following that, with the architectural shingles, and then your shutters, window shutters as well, will be your material.
Any further discussion? All right, all in, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The final site plan for 7401 Metro Boulevard has been approved. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, item 2011-0015.11A, preliminary plat approval, Refine LLC for 6109 Oaklawn Avenue, Edina, Minnesota.
Okay, thank you Chair, members of the commission. This next project is located in the northeast quadrant of the city. It's just south of Pamela Park on Oaklawn. So look at the existing site today. There's an existing single-family home located on the south half of the lot with a detached garage, and there's some mature oak trees. There's a look at the existing house that's on the property today and those trees, three of them anyway. The applicant is proposing to tear the house down and build two new homes, subdivide the property into two 50-foot lots more reminiscent of the surrounding properties. This is a look at potential building pads on the two properties. They would be essentially restoring the original plat within this area when it was platted with 50-foot lots. The request before you requires a subdivision to create the two lots, lot width variances from 75 feet to 50 feet, lot area variances from 9,000 square feet to just under 6,700 square feet. As the commission likely recalls, the zoning ordinance was changed in 1951 to those 75-foot and 9,000-square-foot minimums. This area was platted well before 1951, so the area was platted originally prior to the current code requirements. The median lots within this area are 50-foot wide and 6,701 square feet, so it's just a hair over the lot sizes that are proposed. Primary issue for the planning commission to consider, are the variance findings met with this project? Staff believes that they are, and I'll go through those findings. The first one that we look at, will the proposal relieve practical difficulties that prevent reasonable use from complying with the ordinance requirement? Staff believes that the practical difficulty in this case is the large oversized nature of this lot. It's twice the size of any other lot, at least on the east side of Oaklawn, and the vast majority of the lots within this area. Staff believes that the request is reasonable, given the context of the neighborhood and the 50-foot lots that exist there today. If variances would be denied on this property, they'd be denied the use of their property, again, similar to the vast majority of the lots on Oaklawn. Similar variances were approved by the city within the last couple of years. The commission may recall, in 2009, this property on Oaklawn at 5920 and 5924, that was a 100-foot wide lot, and that was, the existing home was located on the north side of that lot, the home torn down and subdivided, and similar variances, as requested this evening, were granted. Just last summer, this property up here on Brookview at 5829, it's a 100-foot wide lot again, and the property owner received a subdivision and variances similar to what the applicant is requesting this evening to subdivide that property. So to deny this application would deny the applicant similar projects that have been approved within the last couple of years. The second criteria that we look at, are there circumstances that are unique to the property and not common to similarly zoned properties and that are not self-created? The condition of the oversized lot is generally unique to this area. Again, the vast majority of the properties in this area are 50-foot wide, and this oversized lot condition was not created by the applicant. Lastly, will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? And again, staff doesn't believe that it would. The proposed lots are more in character, the 50-foot wide lots is the predominating lot size in this area. The last issue that I'd like to touch on is in regard to those large oak trees in the front yard. Here's a look at three of them. And you might note that the proposed building footprint would cause the elimination of all four of those trees. Here's another look at, there's the front three, and this is the fourth one that's located behind. As you see, it kind of leans and would actually probably lean in toward any new home that would be built on that south side, you see right there. When you look at the footprint here that's been proposed, it would meet the front yard setback requirement to match up with the homes on either side. However, the rear setback, they're showing a 40-foot setback. The requirement is 25 feet. So if this were shifted back 15 feet, in all likelihood, that back tree wouldn't be saved, but it's possible that those front three could be saved by shifting that back. The result would be, you'd have two homes that are set further back than any lot on the property. So I'd ask the planning commission to consider, you could put a condition that those front trees remain in that, in that house, that the new houses be shifted back. The trade-off is if those trees were ever to, if they don't make it through construction or are removed for whatever reason, then you've got two houses that are set further back than the rest of the homes on the neighborhood. So it's kind of a weighing what's more in character in the neighborhood. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the subdivision subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in the staff report.
Thank you, Carrie. Questions of staff? Commissioner Scher?
Mr. Teague, the existing house that's on the property, is that the only house that's ever been on that property?
As far as I'm aware of, yes.
Okay, so it was originally developed?
Correct.
As the width that it is now?
Right.
Other questions of staff?
Carrie, do we know when, you said it was originally two lots, do we know when it was consolidated?
That I don't know exactly when. That might be something perhaps the applicant is aware of, but I'm not sure.
And so we don't, I mean, we wouldn't know whether it was done before or after the house was built on the lot? Just don't know?
Correct.
Great.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you. Would the proponent please come forward and present the case?
Good evening. My name is Andy Porter. I'm here on behalf of Refine. I currently live at 6125 Westridge Boulevard, Edina. Carrie, as usual, did a very good job of detailing the project, especially in the staff report goes into a lot of detail, so I'm not going to gurgitate all that. But I'd like to speak for a few minutes and to clarify just a few items. First of all, a little background on me and our company. I grew up in Edina and have lived and worked the majority of my life in this community. My company, Refine, is a home builder and remodeler primarily focused on the Edina market and surrounding area. We have built homes in most of the neighborhoods of East Edina and understand each neighborhood can have its own unique character, culture, and demographic. We watched this property sit on the market for some time, and after touring it and experiencing it, realized that the market was not interested in it, in its current form because of the layout. We agreed to purchase the home with the intention to bring the parcel back to its original intention, which is two platted lots, as Carrie mentioned. As we proceeded through our application, we mailed over 70 letters to the neighborhood and have offered to meet with the adjacent neighbors on Oaklawn to describe the project. To date, we have received four phone calls from neighbors on Oaklawn supporting our plan, and have been provided three opposition letters from homeowners on other streets. We understand that we have, that when someone opposes a project, they usually speak up. When they support it or simply don't care either way, they usually don't speak up. This is just the nature of a very busy community. We also reviewed the planning commission hearing for the recent approval that Carrie mentioned at 5829 Brookview, and further realized the support for this type of project is widely supported throughout the entire neighborhood, not just on our block. Carrie mentioned the status of the trees on the property. As you may be aware, there have been rumors milling around for years about the possibility of a tree ordinance in the city of Edina. As you know, currently, there is no such ordinance. Some municipalities have tackled this tricky topic, but Edina has not yet decided to do so. We would actually be interested in a practical tree ordinance debate in the future, which we would participate in, but we believe tonight is not the time nor the venue for such a hearing. After reviewing the most recent Brookview project public hearing in front of this planning commission, I noticed trees were not even discussed, although that plan included removing five trees as well. Also, the approved project at 5920 had a number of significant trees on its property that were removed as part of their redevelopment. The consensus, as indicated from city council minutes, is widespread that that project has been a positive change for the street and the neighborhood. Also, while reviewing the recent Brookview project approval in front of the planning commission and the city council, I noticed that one of the planning commissioners made a comment, and I repeat, quote, "We need a policy decision from the council on these issues," unquote. Through city council's 4-1 approval of the Brookview project, we feel that their direction on these matters has been given to us. As I close, I would like to ask a rhetorical question of the commission. If this parcel was not currently platted, and you had the authority to plaid it, it had to be a single family, would you make this parcel a single 100-foot lot, which could have a home of over 9,000 square feet? Or would you make it two lots with homes that match and flow with the established streetscape of the block? I think most people would say this is a 50-foot lot, street in a 50-foot lot neighborhood. It was platted that way, the current 100-foot lot looks wrong. Thank you for your time, and I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Commissioner Carpenter?
Mr. Porter, you're aware that there have been some letters that have been sent in with respect to this subdivision and the, I guess, the concept of what's going to get built there? And you have, at this point, the ability to speak to what is intended to be built there?
The, what our objective on this, as I mentioned in my letter to the city, is we're not currently in the business of spec-ing anything there. That's not part of our business plan. What our preference would be is to find some buyers and build homes to their liking rather than us guessing what the market wants. Our company has built a lot of homes in Edina, and very, very infrequently do we go in for variances on structure. So I can anticipate what our homeowners may ask us to do, but we would certainly encourage them not to drive towards variances. We like keeping scale. We like keeping homes nested down and being appropriate in the neighborhood. So that's kind of our objective, but sometimes with homeowners, they push you, and then we push back, and we try to find some compromise. So I don't know if that helps, but we certainly would, the objective is to stay inside the ordinance. And based on the neighborhood and the market, getting large, you know, getting a little bit larger and growing out, sometimes isn't the right investment, so it's going to depend.
I'd suggest it's rather difficult to justify a variance on an empty lot. You know, it's one thing when you have an existing home that's being remodeled, such as the one we just handled this evening, where you're limited by what was built and what was, what was created and what exists as opposed to a clean slate. So I'm not sure, you know, it just would seem to me to be a hard row to hoe to ask for variances on an empty lot. Just my comment. Other comments, questions of Mr. Porter? Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Thank you.
Are there other individuals who wish to speak to this issue? And I would, again, I would anticipate more discussion on this than we've had on the other two issues tonight. Would ask that you remember, you know, again, the same comment repeated four times doesn't make the comment any better. So anyone wish to speak on this issue?
Good evening. I'm Trudy Langren. We live in the house directly behind on Brookview Avenue that would be impacted by a second house going on that lot. A little bit of history, we knew the original owners of the 6109 Oaklawn house, and they built that home, bought the two lots, wanted that 100-foot lot. When we looked at houses to move into Edina, we looked at the house at 6101 Oaklawn, which was adjacent, directly adjacent to it, and we ended up buying the house directly behind at 6104 Brookview. So we know both of those houses very well. We know that area very well. We've been there since 1976. The realtor told us that in 1951, the lot sizes were set at 75, so we would always have an open lot behind us. And so that really impacted our decision to buy in that area. So that is, was important to us at that time. Now granted, our children are raised, but I still would like to be able to look out my back window and see a nice backyard. The other piece is that if you go back those 15 feet, the topography in that area, and I don't know if you've looked at that, but our house already is on the lower part of a hill in that particular area from Oaklawn to Brookview going west to east. So if you put a tall, narrow house in there, we literally will not see anything because it will be towering over us because we are already so much lower. So I know that. So I know that my word has very little impact in decisions, but I want to go on record saying that I want you to stand by what we were told when we bought into Edina, that lots were set at 75 feet. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langren.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Erhammer. I reside at 6101 Oaklawn Avenue. It's the blue house just north of this lot. I've lived there since 1991. I personally knew Gladys, the original owner of the house. John, her son, and family moved in at the same time I did, a week before Ashley. John took control of the house after his mother died, and I know John very well and I know the property. The house actually sits a foot or so, foot and a half over the property line, so the lots must have been tied before the house was put in at that point in time. Also, the house was set back, I know by Gladys, to preserve those trees in the front, and she was also quite a gardener, and that's part of the reason why the side line is open there. Also, that lot slopes towards my house and between water runoff and snow melt, when I originally bought the house, which was a complete disaster, we had a lot of water problems in that home. And I changed the grade at my house and changed the grade along the fence line that separates two properties to control that and run the water to the back of the lot. One of my concerns is that if you put two houses in here and pick up that water on the roof and dump it in one spot, we're going to have a bit of a problem because right now the water that runs off and runs to the back runs along my neighbor's to the east garage and across the driveway. And they already have an issue with that kind of a problem. And you probably understand that this house, when it goes in on the north lot, if this thing is separated, it's going to be within 12 feet of my house. And it's going to stick three feet past the same front corner on my house because my house is built with a return on it of three feet. Also, if it's anything like Adam or Andy referred me to in our discussion at the time that he met with me, was the house would be similar to one that's being built on Fairfax and 59th. I don't know if any of you, I imagine you've probably been by it, have seen it. And we talk about lot sizes being the same consistency, looking for that same thing through the neighborhood. I can guarantee you that that house is nothing like the houses that exist in my neighborhood. Nothing like it. We're story and a halves, thousand foot, square foot. Some of them are ramblers. Like I said, some are story and a halves, detached garages, open backyards, visibility north and south when you stand out there. And this thing that he's proposing to put in there is going to cut off all that visibility and that openness. Those are the things that we bought into. Myself, I bought my house because when I walked in there and sat down on it, my house was built in 1958, or 1948, pardon me, after the Bollander house. My house is turned so that my living room, kitchen, dining room, all face south. I have huge windows, take advantage of that. And if they put this house in, peak of my house is 21 feet. If they put these houses in like they're suggesting, I'm going to lose all my sunlight on that south end. When I sit in my living room and look out my picture window, which is to the west, I'll see the front corner of that house. And when I look out my south windows, I'll look at siding and shingles. And when I look out my east windows from my kitchen and out my pattern door, I'm going to look at a family room full of windows with a view line over six feet that's going to not be able to block off by any city-approved fence height. And I'm going to have a yard like a fishbowl. And if the house is built anything like that on the south lot, so are the Kipkies who have the house south of that and all the houses south. I find this very intrusive. Also, like I said, I bought my house and refurbished it due to the fact that I had that, I was guaranteed by the city at the time. I was told by the agent when I bought it that they couldn't be built on because the house was over the lot and required 75 feet. And I'm not a guy to trust somebody who's trying to sell me something. I came to the city and they confirmed that, that that lot would never be developed. And here we are, it's 20 years later. I'm standing here having somebody try to, who doesn't have an interest in the neighborhood, doesn't live in the neighborhood, once I come in, tear it apart, dismantle that property and that, in that home, and change it. Shove in a couple of big houses, leave, we get to live with it. And as you can imagine, he might not have gotten a no letter from me, but I'm here to tell you that I'm not in favor of it. I don't know what else to tell you about that. It's easy to think progress and tearing out homes. I can guarantee you, I've been in that house probably almost as much as the Bollanders. Does it need refurbishing? Does it need rework? Yes, it does. It's nothing like mine was when I bought it. But it's not the trend nowadays to spend a little bit of time or money or effort and do this sort of thing. Strip it clean and rebuild on it and try to remake it. That's the trend. And once again, it seems strange to me because I know that house can be salvaged. I know that house, if a decent owner bought it, could refurbish it, add on to it, make it a wonderful home, and preserve that property. So I really don't know what else to tell you about the situation there. I mean, if there are questions, I'd be happy to answer it. I can pretty much tell you everything about the house. After 20 years of living there, knowing the people, and like I said, I've actually helped John do remodeling in it, the current owner and various other things.
Okay. Mr. Stone?
Mr. Erhammer, thank you for coming out tonight and sharing your thoughts. I know, you know, getting out of your house and coming down here is an important, important factor. One of the things I'm curious about, you got a 100-foot lot. They could put a big house on there.
Well, that's what they're proposing. They're not proposing putting on a house that's similar to anything that's in the neighborhood.
No, I mean, if it doesn't get subdivided and you got a 100-foot lot.
I'll tell you what, I'm willing to risk it because anybody who's going to buy that property and wants to put in a substantial home on it isn't going to push it to five feet within the property lines on both sides. They may set it back. You may have an issue with it deeper in the lot to save the trees if they elect to do that. I can't answer to that. That would be whoever would bought it and whatever would be approved. But I can guarantee you, well, I wouldn't say I guarantee you, but it certainly puts some money on it. Nobody would put a house on it and push it to five feet of the lot.
Well, but they could do that. That's what they're not to do.
Certainly could, but like I said, I'll roll the dice on it because I know the opportunity that is far lower than having two homes that are going to take up the building pad on that site.
Can I ask you one other question?
Certainly.
You were talking about, if you look out the front, I assume you meant the Oaklawn side of your house.
The Oaklawn side facing west, yes.
Right, facing west. You said that it would see the corner of the house. I just don't quite understand. You explained something about a return and...
The, the north end of my house, my house is flipped compared to most people on the corner. The north end of my house holds the two bedrooms and the bathroom, if you have an idea what a standard story and a half looks like. The house was built with the living room on the south end, the kitchen and the dining room just off the kitchen there. So I have a lot of south-facing windows in my living room, in my kitchen, in my master bedroom upstairs, which, like I said, gives us a lot of light. The return actually is from, the north end of the house is up to the setback.
Right, and it looks like it's lined up.
As it passes, right, as it passes the entry door, it drops back three feet. Part of that was, I'm not really sure why they did it. There is a pine tree there in the front of the corner. I believe it was probably there when the house was built and they probably did that to maintain that pine tree. Of course, that pine tree is, who knows how old? Sixty, 70 years of age now. But if you would sit in my living room, which is basically, as you know, there's a fireplace on the one end, the couch and the chairs sit on the other. You have a TV to your left, your picture window is on the right-hand side. If you would sit on my couch, actually, you would block off both windows on either side of the fireplace. And if you look through the corner angle of the front window, you'd see that. I know it because I went out there and posted it and went and sat in my living room. So I'd see the front corner of that house.
Because your house is lined up when you go south of 6109, so 6113, 6117, 6121. I mean, you can almost line up a ruler with your, but it's your front door and then it steps back a little bit.
It would be my front door and then it steps back. And then, of course, the Bollander's house is probably held back, I think about 10 feet. There's only one tree that actually is outside of the setback or towards the street side of the setback. That would be the front one. You probably can't see it in the pictures. But it's almost, the backside of it is almost dead on the line. So, so even if somebody would build a house, there's no way you could save that tree. I mean, there's just no way because it would be rooted underneath of the, of whatever excavation you would do. But then, of course, they jump back out when you get to the neighbor's house on, neighbor's house on the south end.
And you said your house was built in 1948?
My house was built in 1948. And it was, yeah, the Bollanders, the Bollanders was built in '42. And like I said, mine was built with a property. It was built to take advantage of that open lot. And like I said, at the time, I bought it. One of my biggest concerns about it because the house, the house I bought, 6101, by today's standards would have been scraped off and replaced. And I bought it basically because it had a good layout. I was guaranteed by the city when I came down here that it would never be built on because of the width of it and the fact that the Bollander house is over top of it or spreads the line or covers the line, I should say.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Erhammer? Commissioner?
Sir, you talk about what was, what the builder has proposed to build on the site.
Yes.
I'm sure you heard him explain that he has no particular plan at this point in time. So I'm curious, trying to reconcile the two different versions here. What is the basis in which you have the...
Basic, and I was informed the same thing. Andy told me straight out, he said, "They don't go and build a house and sell it. They wait until they get a buyer," right? And I always kind of like to know what they're going to put in here. And his comment was that it would be similar, or he expected it to be similar to the home that they're building on Fairfax and 59th. So I went over and had a look at that. Now, that doesn't mean that it's going to be that home. That's a different thing altogether. But it's also not a guarantee that there's going to be a house smaller than that. My anticipation is, is that it's going to be bigger than that with the trends that's going on here and if the lot and the space is available for him and somebody wants that. I could end up with two stories five feet from my fence line. Now, on the other hand, perhaps somebody would come in and build a thousand-square-foot house. I don't anticipate that we're going to see that and it's something that would fit into the neighborhood.
Okay, Mr. Erhammer, other questions of Mr. Erhammer? I'm going to thank you for your comments, sir, and see if there are additional comments this evening.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Kathy McGuire. I live across the street on 6104 Oaklawn Avenue. And I have mixed feelings about the subdivision, but I'm with everybody else in thinking, I don't want to, I wouldn't approve something until I saw what was going to be built there. All the homes in that neighborhood are sort of like the ones in Country Club where you have your front lawn access. And what his plan looked like, I had to believe, that they would be putting the garages in the front of the house. And none of the houses on those blocks have that situation. We all have our front lawns open so the kids can go running across. And again, I would not like to see a 3,000-square-foot house that I believe was put on the other side of the block when a house was torn down and they tried to subdivide a lot. So I guess those are my comments. And it's interesting to find out what else is going on in my neighborhood. Didn't realize that those homes were sold. And it's good to have people come out from your neighborhood and support the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGuire.
Other comments?
Can I project one thing?
Sure.
I did not meet with Andy Porter.
Would you give us your name and address, please?
I'm sorry, Jackie Whitbeck, 6128 Brookview Avenue. I did not call Andy Porter to meet with him because I've already met with Andy Porter before when he worked for another company and was presenting a similar project to me. And it was not a fun meeting. His proposal was, let us subdivide this property and put in these two houses. Or if you don't let us do it, we're going to put in this. That was the meeting. It was more of a threat than anything else. I felt very insulted by the whole thing. Anyway, so I did not contact Mr. Porter to express my objections. One thing that has come up, you were talking about the original intent of the, or the original intent of the first plat. That I, as I've heard before, oh, thank you. The, the code trumps the original plat anyway, so it really is a moot point. But the original plat also platted out my house, which was there before the plat, into three different properties. It also plats out Pamela Park. The whole park is platted out to be built. So I don't think that plat has any bearing on this at all. I totally disagree with the fact that this has met any of the criteria per state law. It's supposed to satisfy the criteria of hardship. It does not. And I disagree with Kerry Teague and I disagree on the other properties that were approved, narrowly approved in one case. And I thought the other approval was supposed to have conditions attached to it, but it did not. It does not satisfy the hardship or practical difficulties. The property is usable the way it is right now. How can you buy it and say, now I'm suffering practical difficulty because I can't subdivide it? And if the whole block is 50-foot lots, fine, there are 50-foot lots. There is no code saying everything has to be 50-foot lot. And personally, I enjoy an open space every now and then. So I like the fact that it's not all 50-foot lots marching down. Also, the property is supposed to, by the criteria, you're supposed to pass three criteria. And it's supposed to not have an adverse effect on the neighborhood and the quality of the neighborhood and the way it is. It most definitely will have a terrible negative impact on, as you've heard from the neighbors. The trees alone, the size of the structures going in, it's not going to be the same neighborhood at all. And so I, it does not meet that criteria either. We talk about, we've got this area as 50-foot lots in the 50s or 40s, whenever. They're all 50-foot lots. Those lots were built at that time for the small homes that were put in on those lots. Back then, those, the size of homes that exist now is what that neighborhood is all about. A small house, a small lot, great. As times changed, 75-foot lots became more desirable because people wanted bigger homes. The city changed their code. And that's the way the trend is now. People want bigger homes. Now, you can't have it both ways. You can't have a huge house smacked into that 50-foot lot that was not intended for. Something's wrong here. I think the city of Edina needs to keep up and is losing pace with the development that's going on around it. And neighborhoods are suffering because there's not a proper restrictions on these, the rebuilding and tear downs, which is a new thing. But I don't think the city is keeping up with putting the proper restrictions on these new developments. And I, I would like to suggest a moratorium be put on developing these 50-foot lots until the city does have something in place that is appropriate. I think it's overdue and I think we're really losing out because it's hurting neighbors, hurting neighborhoods. It doesn't benefit the city and it devalues other people's property. It's not right and it's not fair. Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Whitbeck? Thank you.
Thank you.
Other individuals who wish to comment?
Hello, Janie Weston. I live at 6136 Brookview Avenue, the next street over from this house. I guess I'm going to talk about trees to start off here. Trees are an important part to our neighborhood. Trees are an important part to our neighborhood. Losing four trees, four completely mature oak trees would be a huge loss to our neighborhood, not just this lot, not just the neighbors, but to everybody in our neighborhood. Can I show this? Um, where do I put this so you can see it? Okay. With the help of Google satellite images, this is Oaklawn, this is Sixty-First, this is Brookview. When houses were first built in this area, the homes, uh, for the most part, that are larger lots than fifty-foot lots, including mine, had large oak trees on them. And each builder or each owner of each lot took into consideration these mature old-girl forest oak trees when they positioned the homes. They were all set back further and the lots were kept bigger to keep these trees around. These trees are two hundred to three hundred fifty years old and we've already lost enough of them. Um, they stretch from the playground area by the park here to here, all the way along the hill back here. They're along, excuse me, along Sixty-Second Street, my front yard, around Witbeck's and Witbeck's front yard. These are the four, um, at the, um, discussed property tonight. And there's an oak tree or two in here also. The X's on my, um, satellite image are trees that have gotten lost since we had a big blowdown back in two thousand and three. Blowdown, 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 blowdown. JMS cut this one down when Andy Porter and Eric Nelson, now with Refine, worked for JMS. And this one got lost too, to disease. We don't need to lose any more trees. We love our trees. They are part of the neighborhood. Um, Refine thinks that it will not diminish the natural streetscape. Well, I think it will and so will a lot of the other neighbors. Those trees, they clean our air, they cool us, they buffer the sound, they give us animal habitat, they're aesthetically pleasing to our neighborhood. If we had to lose, lose four mature oak trees, it would make a huge difference in how this street feels. And by the way, I contacted Diane Plunkett Latham, um, asked me if she could come and talk about this too, and she felt that she had a conflict of interest, this is my phrasing, but, um, because the, um, subcommittee of the Energy and Environment Commission is working on a tree ordinance and it sounds like it's going to be ready for consideration quite soon. And I hope it has enough, enough teeth in it and is similar to what the city of Minnetaka has. What the city of Minnetaka has, um, a developer cannot buy a piece of property and just, it will cut down all the trees on the property without showing good reason for doing so. Something else here. Um, as far as the number of lots that are fifty feet wide, um, or greater than fifty feet wide, this circle right here, can I have it on the overhead camera? Okay. Here's our lot. I'm going to orient it that way. This is Oaklawn, this is Brookview. These lots are now Park and there's our said property. If you drew a three-hundred-fifty-foot circle, which is the more immediate neighborhood, twenty-five percent of the homes in that circle are greater than fifty feet in width. This is not an unusual one-hundred-foot-wide lot. This is a self-created practical difficulty formerly known as undue hardship. Andy Porter wants to buy, and his company, Refine, wants to buy this lot with full knowledge that this is a one-hundred-foot lot. There is no hardship here, none. There is a perfectly good, reasonable use of the property already in existence. We don't need two huge maxed-out houses that take away water runoff area that, um, obstruct a lot of different people's views, depending on where your home is located. Bigger is not better. At least, I don't think so and a lot of other people don't either. The current city code should trump the original fifty-foot plat. That plat was done way, way back, more than sixty years ago. We still do not, at this time period, if you want to go back to sixty years ago, then why don't we have covenants on a lot of pieces of property that say, "Hmm, you can't sell your piece of property to blacks and Jews." Because that's what my former residents on Oak Drive said. It was really interesting to, when I bought that house, to look at that document and my jaw dropped. I thought, "My gosh, when this house was built in nineteen fifty, and my former house, couldn't sell it to blacks and Jews? You want to go back to the old way of doing things?" I think not. We could sell off all the lots in the park, help the city budget out. You think that's a good idea? I don't think city, citizens would think that's a good idea either. I think we need to have a moratorium on lot divisions for anything that is under seventy-five foot width and/or nine thousand square feet. Because it seems that we don't have people yelling and screaming and squawking, complaining to the planning commission or the city when lots are combined. When my husband and I bought the vacant lot next door so that we could build a shop, studio, garage that spans the property line, I do not believe there were any complaints to the city about that. When a hundred-foot lot is going to be divided and the proposal is to put two eight-hundred-thousand-dollar, not reasonably affordable to young family houses on them...
Ms. Weston...
...that's when we get complaints.
There's a lot of speculation on what Mr. Porter's going to put on that lot, but he said he has no current plans on what he's going to put on the lot. So just from the standpoint of what's being presented at the meeting, uh, we don't know what Mr. Porter's going to put on the lot, whether it's eight-hundred-thousand dollars or twenty-five-thousand dollars. So I'm not trying to be argumentative.
Well, I'm...
I'm just pointing out that in his testimony earlier, he said he has not, he's not building spec houses and he'll wait until, uh, Mr. Erhämmer, we're not going to hear from you right now. He's not said that he has any particular plan on what he's going to put on the house, on the lot.
Um, I just want to let you know what the neighbor, um, two doors down from, uh, to the south of the lot being discussed tonight at sixty-one seventeen. And she wrote you a letter saying that she thinks two reasonably priced homes would be a good idea. Well, I, I went and knocked on her door and asked her what, um, what size Andy Porter told her the houses would be, what cost price point. And she said seven-hundred thousand to eight-hundred thousand dollars. This is what she was told by Andy, what she related to me just a few days ago. And I don't think that's very reasonable for young families that want to move into Edina either, unless you're independently wealthy and who knows what. Most people, that would not consider that reasonably priced. When the lot discussion of fifty-nine twenty, I believe it is, Brookview was being discussed last summer, um, Commissioner Schroeder had said, and I'm, or no, not, excuse me, not Commissioner Schroeder, Commissioner Fisher had said, and I'm quoting this because this was taken directly out of the minutes. "The majority of Edina's zoning ordinance requirements were established in the nineteen-seventies or earlier." And this, and this is my aside, nineteen fifty-one for seventy-five-foot width lots. "And since that time, no one has taken the time to adjust the language. I think it's about time to put a moratorium on divisions that create lots of fifty-foot width. And let's get this figured out so that massive houses that really squeeze everybody else surrounding them onto the lot, that something be worked out so that there's a proportionate limit." Minneapolis has done something, I've been told, with their, um, their code, that if a lot does get divided, new construction cannot be too much larger than what's around it.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Suppose Mr. Porter decides not to subdivide the lot and to tear down the four trees and to build a maximum-sized house on the lot?
Well, it reminds me of a question I was asked, um, no, I wasn't asked this, my husband was asked this, um, regarding sixty-one twenty Brookview Avenue a few years back. Same question. Would you prefer one large house or the two, um, somewhat smaller houses? And he thought, thought, finally said, "Well, I guess one large house." And I remember former Commissioner Julie Rissner's comment. "Well, talk about pick your poison because that's what it feels like. At least one house has, except for the garage, um, has setbacks that go further back from the side lot lines."
Not necessarily.
Or living space.
Not necessarily.
For living space, isn't it ten feet versus five? Okay, I'm getting that wrong. Well, it still feels very squeezed.
Okay.
So it's basically a pick-your-poison type of question. I think the new, any new construction should be figured more in relation to what is around it than looking solely at that lot, period. It needs to fit better into the neighborhood and not be extremely oversized in relation to everything else. So too much change, too drastically, is not a happy situation and that's when people really complain. And people shouldn't be feeling like, "Well, gee, if we're going to build that, I'm going to move." That's not right either. People shouldn't feel like they have to move, so.
Other questions for Ms. Weston? Thank you, Ms. Weston.
Okay.
Do others wish to speak? Use a side mic, please.
Over here?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Dick Witbeck. I live at sixty-one twenty-eight Brookview Avenue and some of you in this room may recall the travesty that was bestowed upon us a couple of years ago. I just have one question and it's probably a rhetorical question, but when is the city government going to put its citizens first?
Thank you, Ms. Witbeck. Do other people wish to speak on this issue?
Hey, I have one thing. If it's possible for me to add one.
Something new?
Yeah. Shaqie Witbeck, uh, sixty-one twenty-eight Brookview. I forgot to mention this. I, as I've told you, I don't believe this has fulfilled the criteria at all, so I hope subdivision is off the table. But Minnesota statute four-six-two-three-five-seven says that the board or governing body, as the case may be, may impose conditions in the granting of variances. A condition must be directly related to and must bear a rough proportionality to the impact created by the variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Witbeck. Other comments? Mr. Porter, let you respond to some of the things that have been said.
I just want to clarify a couple of things. I was not working at JMS when the tree was taken down. I wasn't, I had left before that happened. I did meet with the neighbors to talk about that subdivision, didn't threaten them. I said, "This is the way the law is. These are our choices, not if you don't, then we're gonna." It wasn't any of that. Um, so I just want to make sure that I have a chance to protect my own reputation on both those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Okay, Mr. Erhämmer, you got something new?
Uh, do me short. First of all...
As long as it's new. You can't repeat what you said already.
I won't.
Okay.
I apologize, first off, for getting excited about this. Uh, I just wanted to confirm one thing. In my discussion with Andy Porter about the houses that were going in there, I was informed that the price point is eight-hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on this topic? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Um, we'll bring this matter up to the commission for comments. Mr. Staunton?
Mr. Chair, a question for Kerry. A seventy-five-foot lot width, what, uh, what portions of, um, the residential districts in the city is that applicable in?
That is applicable to the entire R-one zoning district with the exception of, you may recall, the seventy-five-foot-wide lot and nine thousand square foot, that's the starting point. If you live in a neighborhood where lots are predominantly larger than those sizes, the minimum lot size is established by the median within five hundred feet of that property. So there has to be a, a calculation done essentially for any neighborhood that's over seventy-five feet in width and nine thousand square feet in size to establish the minimum lot sizes.
Any other comments? Questions, concerns? Mr. Fisher? You'll be quoted again.
I'm too darn quotable, that's the problem. You know, it's like having the same really difficult discussion over and over again, uh, which should be an indicator that we probably really need to do something. The, yeah, what I, I think what I talked about last time, and I think is still the key issue here, is that when, uh, when the change was made to a seventy-five-foot lot minimum, it was a blanket deal across the city, whether it, you know, and, you know, I wasn't there, I don't know what the reasons for that were, um, but we, we've dealt with the same issue with the minimum driveway width. Um, we set it, you know, and that's what, when you set something in, in zoning like that, it applies across the community even though it may not fit. What we found is that really didn't fit. The driveway width didn't fit in Country Club. We were, we had to give variances almost every time. Uh, we fixed the driveway problem. We haven't fixed this problem. And I think that's what I was getting to at that last discussion. When we did the comp plan, it was very important, an important part of the comp plan is recognizing neighborhood character and the fact that we have neighborhoods that have different character throughout the city. So one-size-fits-all doesn't fit all. Um, and that's the difficulty here is if we were to go back and I would say, to answer Mr. Porter's question, if I were to create, um, the, you know, if this was a lot that we, you know, and taking it out of this context, what would you make it? You would make it the same as the lots around it, which would be two fifty-foot lots. That doesn't mean it makes it easy, um, you know, because what we're, what we heard tonight was very, uh, specific experiences and, uh, it affects people around them, people that have counted on things over the years. Um, and that's where it gets extremely difficult because we're, you know, we're trying to deal with it at a different level and yet we know there are absolute impacts on people. Um, I think, well... Think, well, I'll leave it at that for right now, thanks.
I have a question and a comment. Kerry, this is a preliminary plot approval, and so what does that, what's the import of this being a preliminary plot approval? I gather this will come back before, if it's approved, I gather it will come back before the commission once again, is that correct? What is the procedure on a preliminary plot approval?
Yeah, the, your recommendation would go forward to the city council, and they would review that preliminary plat, final plats do not come back to the planning commission. Oftentimes, we do preliminary and final at the same time, not all the time. More complicated plats typically have two shots with the city council.
Okay.
But this one would not come back.
Right. Thank you. Then the other comment I have to make is several years ago, an item came before the planning commission, and there was a lot about 60, 6,400 maybe, well, 6,700 maybe. No, 64, 64, France Avenue South. And the lot, big open space that ran from France up to, what's the street to the east? Ewing? Don't know my alphabet. And the proposal was to divide that big space into four lots. You may recall that. And as I recall, we put several conditions on those lots with respect to setbacks and possibly lot coverage, because we didn't want one great big house on it, but you may recall what we did with that. And Kerry, I don't think you were commission, director at that time, but I do recall we did that, and as I recall, the person that was, the applicant was a little bit upset with what we did, with the restrictions we put on it. Yeah, but...
He was.
Thank you. So, it seems to me it is possible, if we move forward with this, to put some kinds of restrictions on the subdivision with respect to setback and tree preservation, for example, or side yard, or, or something like that. So, I just offer that as, I offer that for your consideration. Mr. Fisher?
I'm not, maybe I'll ask Kerry this question, but, you know, we've dealt with these, there've been, as we've talked about tonight, there've been a couple of these very similar ones right within blocks of here. And yet I don't recall this level of opposition, really anywhere close to this level of opposition. So, I'm sitting here thinking, what's different here? Is it, is it the trees? Is it, you know, what, what are the facets of this one that are different than those? And would that be some indicator to Chair Grable's point, if we're going to look at something here? I mean, I would have to see what's different before we would do something entirely different than what we've done in two previous cases.
Yeah, you're right, there wasn't much opposition, if at all, for either one of those two to the north, and even that one on France, very little opposition there as well. We didn't impose conditions on those two to the north in regard to reducing the height and adjusting the setback like what was done on France. The council did modify those conditions slightly, they weren't, I don't have the specifics in front of me, but there were conditions put on, like you had mentioned, the France-Ewing subdivision.
Yeah, I guess in light of our recent discussions for other variances, to, you know, for this one, I did go back and review the statute and then some of the comments in the League of Minnesota Cities. And just, you know, kind of wrote things out as a checklist because, for my own use. Basically, you know, yeah, we want people to feel like they can do what they want to do with their own property. And what is the, you know, what makes this the, a unique practical difficulty? It's because somebody can't make as much money off of it if they only build one house, possibly. They might, they might, if they build a big house, I don't know. But the statute specifically says, and it's a quote, "Economic considerations alone do not constitute practical difficulties." Regarding the, the three-part check as to practical difficulties, is the use reasonable? The landowner would like to use it in a reasonable manner, but can't do so because of the ordinance? I'd say it's pretty reasonable. Uniqueness, physical characteristics, not the preferences of the landowner should be considered. And by physical characteristics, they refer to things like sloping topography, wetlands and trees, that get in the way of, that require the variance. And then the essential character of the neighborhood, how it will look, affect sightlines and so forth. And I think there's even, if I recall, although I didn't make a note of this, a comment about access to light and solar access, that's in the statute itself. The statute specifically notes also that past practice, in other words precedent, we, it can be used to understand the rationale for, you know, to discuss rationale, but we have to apply these tests de novo, we have to apply them individually to each case that comes before us and have findings that support each case. And that neighborhood opinion alone is only, you know, useful to us to provide substantiating facts, not whether they think it's a good thing or a bad thing. They also, then at the League of Minnesota Cities site, they said that it's preferable that cities then adopt findings regarding their variance decision, especially if there's a refusal. And they gave some questions for that. Is the variance in harmony with the purposes and intent of the ordinance? That one, I would say currently, no. Is it in harmony with what we all want? Maybe to have, allow smaller lots here and there? Perhaps not. But the ordinance, as it's written now, I would say the variance request is not in harmony with it, because our ordinances were, our ordinance was written to provide larger lots. In fact, there's even, again, like Mr. Teague pointed out, a part there where they want minimum lots, or size of the home, on the house, or, I'm sorry, but they're trying to encourage the larger buildings on those larger lots. Also, is it consistent with the comp plan? I had to chew on this one a little bit and go back to the comp plan as well, and there's a lot of sections in there, well, about neighborhoods and also about affordable housing. And, you know, thinking about it, these are homes that aren't $800,000 homes by and large in this neighborhood. But what are our goals regarding affordable housing stock in our city? We say that we want to maintain it and increase those options for our workforce housing, and yet, when these things come before us, more and more, we're going the other direction. Again, let's see, we should evaluate whether the property would be put to use in a reasonable manner. Are there unique circumstances not created by the owner? I would have to agree with whoever was saying that this would be completely created by, by the owner of the property, that, that right now, a home is on the property, it complies with our ordinance, it's in line with the goals of the ordinance, and you can build a home on that property, the way it is, without the variance to, that would allow us to subdivide it. And that if granted, will it alter the essential character of the locality? I went back a second time then after, to view the site, and because I, when I got home the first time, I was thinking, wait a minute. I was recalling that these were mostly, there were a lot of one-story homes, I was wondering, are there any two-story homes on that block? No, there are not. The most there are are story and a half homes. So, also since the statute does allow us to, to put some conditions on any variance decision we have, I, and I think that, that height is a concern personally of mine and of the neighbors, it sounds like. I think that if we were to go forward with this, that that would be an appropriate and a related condition to the effect that we want to mitigate. So, I'm, I had trouble when I went back and went through this. I personally, I can't support the variance because, and the subdivision to do so, because whether or not I like it, I don't think it meets the criteria. And it's, you know, I think, I also think that if we, as we go forward, we need more discussion perhaps, we, perhaps we need to amend the ordinance, perhaps we need to, you know, monitor the size of the structures that go on non-conforming lots. But currently, it's a legal non-conforming lot, and we can have it both ways. We can't promote larger lots on the one hand when it works for us, and then promote splitting up lots to be non-conforming when it works for us another way. So, that's it.
Further discussion? Mr. Rock?
So, in the report that we have, it says that the practical difficulty is due to the fact that the subject property is double the size of all lots in the block. And I would just like to argue that I don't think that's a practical difficulty at all, rather a matter of uniqueness. Furthermore, I think that in the, will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? Merely the fact that it doesn't conform doesn't mean that it's not part of the character and the cur, excuse me, the current character of the neighborhood depends on variant lot
Further discussion? Commissioner Scher?
I find these discussions difficult, and I, maybe because I do, Commissioner Fisher, I recall that there, there was a lot of discussion in all four of those, I can remember all of those meetings real distinctly. And I, I remember the allusion that someone made to, I think it was Chairman Lonsberry, tossing out the question to your husband, Ms. Weston, about, "Pick your poison," and that was a really rough part of a conversation. I, I'm, I become stuck on the idea that I do think it is, regardless of our subsequent interpretive efforts here, it is reasonable for our citizens to have an expectation that city ordinances that have been in effect for decades will be enforced. And, you know, we're starting to create our own little bit of history when we fall back on, "We made this exception, we made this exception," now we're making all the exceptions the rule. And I'm getting a little stuck on that, I guess personally. I understand why people would be surprised to hear that a longstanding city code with regard to lot width, you know, would be looked at differently. It is our fault, I guess I would say, we haven't addressed it, we haven't created differing standards throughout the city. That would be an issue for another long discussion, and it might be something we want to do. But we only addressed the large lot when we made those exceptions to the 75-foot width in our code. So, I'm going to have to say that, as I reflect on this, and I recall that we, we weren't, I don't think unanimous in any of those other votes. You know, there's been difference even among us as we faced every one of these issues. And I guess I am, am going to say on this one, I can't support the subdivision, and I really think we need to have further discussions about these kinds of situations and come up with a standard that we're very willing to impose.
Other discussion? Commissioner Staunton?
A few thoughts. I think, first of all, there's been a lot of very impassioned pleas from the neighbors, and I understand the, the strong feelings, it's your neighborhood, it's where you live, it's, it's, it's important. So, I, I get that. But I do think some of the conversation that we've been having are about issues that really aren't related to the subdivision. So, the trees, for instance. As much as I'd like to save the oak trees, even if we don't grant the subdivision, somebody can come in and take the oak trees out. We don't have any control over there. The size of the house, the subdivision isn't really designed to drive the size of the house. We have setback and height regulations in our code that govern how big a house you can put on a lot and where you can put it on the lot. And if we put conditions on this, that if we were to grant the variance and put conditions on it, a house right next door that has a 50-foot lot could later evolve from a story and a half to two stories and fit within the height, and then you'll be left with this being the smallest house on the lot and sticking out. I just look at this, at the map on page A2, which shows all these lots, and it's just, I mean, this area of town is just so overwhelmingly 50-foot lots. And it seems to me to kind of say that this, this property owner has to stick with a 100-foot lot, when there's, the same side of the street that he's on, every single lot is a 50-foot lot. On the other side, every lot except for one is a 50-foot lot. I just think, you know, given what we did up on the 5,800 block of Brookview, given what we did on the 5,900 block of Oaklawn, I, I think that the variance is justified here. And I think the, you know, the questions about what happens next really have to do with the bulk regulations that we have elsewhere in the code, and the height, and the setbacks. And frankly, I'm, I'm, I'm heartened to hear that Mr. Porter is not planning a spec house, because I think somebody who comes in and wants to buy a house is also going to have to realize that they've got to live in the neighborhood. And they're going to have to figure out what's the right way to fit in the neighborhood. And I think, I think in this case, that's the right answer.
Other discussion? Commissioner Forrest?
I'd like to respond to that a little bit. First of all, it may seem like it, it makes sense, but we still have to use those, we have to go through those criteria, and it's the, the three-part check, and also that it is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the way our ordinances are currently written, and also that it's consistent with the comp plan. I don't see where the comp plan directs us to make lots smaller, other than, we do want possibly greater density in the future, but in the situation, I don't think, I think it, the comp plan speaks against it more than not. And again, you spoke to precedent, it's, precedent is not the consideration here. And what we think might happen next door in the future is in the consideration. However, this is a property that's been, a single property for many, many years, and has resulted in the home that is immediately next door being built and oriented in such a way to take advantage of the fact that it's a larger lot. You know, I buy a house on a lake, then I, I kind of expect the lake to be there tomorrow. And I don't expect everybody else to have to buy a house on a lake, or to have a lake in their yard as well. So, it's, I think it, and, and conditions are specifically allowed by state law, and specifically allowed to address any findings of negative effect. And trees are one of the considerations that can be taken into consider, can be looked at when you're looking at the uniqueness of a property. And here, I don't think, I think the existence of the trees doesn't speak in favor of the variance, but rather speaks against it.
Mr. Staunton?
With respect to the comp plan, and the character, and the, you know, kind of harmony and purpose with the intent, I mean, I think it's pretty clear that this part of town is intended to have 50-foot lots, and that it is consistent with that. And what I would find much less consistent is if somebody came in and built a house that filled up the 100-foot lot, and it would entirely stick out. I think it would not be at all consistent with the character of that neighborhood. And I think, you know, the, having two 50-foot lots is, is the best way for it to fit in with what's in the neighborhood.
I'm interested in what the reaction would be if somebody at... I'm interested in what the reaction would be if somebody at, uh, say 5836 Brookview, or 50, maybe 5841 Brookview, bought the lot next door, uh, and decided to tear down both houses and replat that, those two lots into one lot, so they could put a big house on that to overlook panel apart. I'm, I suspect, uh, that would create some real angst among a lot of people. I agree with Commissioner Staunton that this is a 50-foot lot neighborhood, and the fact that somebody at one time said the lot, minimum lot size is 75-foot doesn't mean that all those 50-foot lots had to be converted to 75-foot lots. I mean, you take the neighborhoods the way they are. Everything we've tried to do on the commission has been to maintain consistency and character within neighborhoods. And here you've got somebody that wants, wants to be, can maintain consistency and character within the neighborhood with a 50-foot lot. I, I, you know, I support this, I support the variance. That's a lot better than tearing down the house that's there and building a megastructure on a 100-foot lot, which is what Mr. Porter's entirely justified in doing.
I'm looking at the map we have that, uh, came with our materials, and I'm going to just roughly estimate that in that neighborhood, if you look at the, um, the 50-foot lots, there's probably something, you know, close to someplace between 100 and 200 of them. Every one of those property owners sitting on a 50-foot lot can decide to tear down their home and, or, or just sell their home to another party who could tear it down and do the same thing that we're trying to prevent, or at least talking about trying to prevent right now by putting conditions on it, et cetera. So, we could, in this particular case, we could, you know, in theory, deny the variance here and, and do nothing virtually to, to, to stop the same thing happening across the street, down the street, two blocks over, or whatever. And it would be a perfectly appropriate, reasonable, and legitimate thing for that property owner to do. So, I, when I look at it from that perspective, I'm not really convinced that there's a substantial difference between the scenario that I just described, where some property owner decides to do that to their own property, or sells it to a third party to do it, or we reduce, um, this particular lot into, into two 50-foot lots. We end up with the same outcome regardless, whether it's this particular site or another site down the street. That's about the only difference that I see. So, I'm sympathetic to the concerns of the neighborhood, but if the concern is this particular site, um, I, I think I'd, I'd just say that, that the, that the problem, to the extent that there is one, if it's not addressed, if it doesn't unfold here, it will unfold next year, you know, sometimes this year, or else, you know, another time, in rating the heart of your community as well. And there's nothing that we could do about that. There's nothing on the books right now that prevent that at all.
Commissioner Scher?
One of the discussions we sometimes have from this podium is what it is our job to, to do while we're here. And, and I do think we're getting far field from our job. I, I view our job as enforcing the ordinances. And I, in this case, because we're hearing a variance request, it is ascertaining whether this meets the requirements as stated by law for obtaining a variance. Do I want to see a large house on 100-foot lot? No, not any more than the neighbors want to see that. To the chairman's question about, you know, what if someone came before us and said, I, I now own two lots and I want to put them together, um, and that might create something that people in the neighborhood, or even people sitting up here, would not find most appropriate to the neighborhood, I, I would say, I would feel the same way, but I would, I would support the combining of the lots because it would meet those tests. It would be, it would meet the city code as it exists today, and we have not changed it, nor has the council, and it would pass any variance tests that we were, it wouldn't even have to pass them because it's a combining, even though the outcome might not be what we would most desire. But assessing the outcome, I guess I don't view as our job here. Our job is to look at these other items. And, and based on that being what I see my task as, uh, tonight, that's why I, I would vote against the subdivision.
Commissioner Forrest, did you have something to say?
Well, basically, um, it's kind of to build on what Commissioner Scher was saying, that it's not up to us to rewrite these ordinances at this point without having a public hearing on that matters on its own, standalone. I think there's a problem right now as well. I, I agree with all of you that, um, this was platted for 50-foot lots. We should maybe have something in our ordinances that would allow this, allow these, um, non-conforming, legally non-conforming lots to, to build, uh, or to be divided so that they can, um, match the plat. But basically, we have to have findings to grant a variance that show that the landowner could not put this land to use, reasonable use, that's so unique that you couldn't have a single-family home on the lot as it now stands. And I don't see that we can do that. And to, in addition, if, because it's not up to us to predict the future either, and that the law allows us to put, in fact, it states it is our option to do it. I mean, it's not just this far-field thing, but it, it puts in there that we can put conditions on things. I think that I would strongly propose that if we go forward with this, that we consider putting some types of conditions that would limit the height, perhaps massing of, of any new structure on those properties, because that neighborhood, they're, they're smaller homes. And we talk about character of the neighborhood. Why do we even have that in there? Why do we give a rip about the character of the neighborhood if we're just going to say, well, it could change in the future? Well, of course it could. But what we're looking at is what's, what we have right now. So, um, I think we could, we can speculate all we want about what might happen and what we want, but right now, the ord, the goal of the ordinance as it was written was to encourage larger lots. That isn't necessarily our goal personally, but that's not up to us. Our findings have to be, comply with what was the purpose referred to, that any granting of a variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the ordinance as written.
With respect to Commissioner Scher's comments, we're not, we're not rewriting the ordinance.
Commissioner Forrest.
Okay. Well, we're not, we're not charged with rewriting the ordinance, and we don't have to rewrite the ordinance because we do have a variance procedure which allows us to make exceptions to what the ordinances say. Uh, well, I'm not sure. We've, you know, we've looked at these, these lots in the past. Is this property owner burdened by the fact that he can't do with his lot what the neighbors on either side of him can do with their lots? We do have, Ms. Weston, the public hearing's over. We, the public, I, I don't know who owns the lot. We've got an application before us for an application for variance. We do have in the ordinance and in the plan, neighborhood consistency, and that's what we're trying to accomplish here, because a 100-foot lot with a 5,000 or 6,000 square-foot house is certainly not something that's within, uh, the character of the neighborhood. And I, I think we'd be justified to approve this variance request, or this subdivision request. I don't want to cut off the discussion. Commissioner Staunton?
Just to pick up on a couple of points that my, um, my marvelous colleagues at the other end of the bench have made. And it, it is a hard conversation to have. I mean, I, I get that. But with respect to the practical difficulties test, there has been a change in the law. It used to say that you have to show that you can't put it to any reasonable use. And now it's a, it's, it's a practical difficulties test, which is a much lower hurdle, much less difficult. And I think the chair put it well when, um, when he said that, you know, the practical difficulty is that this property owner can't use his property the way the property owners on either side can, because he's restricted by the subdivision ordinance. You know, the, the other, um, comment that came up was about predicting the future. And while it's true we can't predict how the, how the neighborhood will develop, we also can't predict what's going to happen on this property either. And that's why we have height and setback regulations, and, and that's what this property owner's going to have to live with. And then the final thing I would say is with respect to the other instances, um, you know, there's been some discussion about precedent. And, and I don't think that the precedent is important as a technical requirement, but I think, I think it's a fairness thing. I mean, I think this, we've had two different properties in this general area come before us, and we've had the same spirited debate, frankly. And to they, then say to this property owner that, that he shouldn't be able to subdivide his property, doesn't seem fair to me unless there's some difference in this property than there was in the other two. And I don't see a difference, and so I'm inclined to vote the same way I did in the other two.
Other discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we grant the variance based on the findings that are in the staff report.
Is there a second to that motion? It's been moved and seconded that the, uh, application be granted subject to the findings and, uh, conditions outlined in the staff report. Is there further discussion on this motion? Do, yeah, do you, would you like a roll call vote on this? Jackie?
Nay.
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 Aye.
Commissioner Clender?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Aye.
Commissioner Stone?
Aye.
Commissioner Scher?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for those of you who came to present tonight. Thank you for the applicant. Thank you for the discussion we've had, uh, here at the table. It's, it's an, a, it's not an easy issue, and I appreciate the, uh, the thought that everyone has put towards this. The next item on the agenda, item 2011, double 16, point 11A, lot division at 5239 Highwood Drive, Edine, Minnesota.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the commission, uh, before you is a lot division, um, of those three properties mentioned by the chair. This is located in the northwest quadrant of the city. It is just south of Mirror Lake, on the south side of the lake. You see the properties, three properties in question are quite oversized lots compared to, um, other lots within this area. This is a look at the existing aerial shot of the three lots. You see the lake as it comes in here. The applicant, uh, at 5239, is requesting the lot division to split off portions of his property and attach to adjacent properties. This is how the property looks today. What the applicant is proposing to do is, uh, split off this portion of his property that would be combined with the lot to the south. And this lakeshore piece of his property would be split off and combined with the other house to the south at 6,000 Pine Grove Road. So, there's three lots involved here, and there's no new lot being created. It's just simply a shifting of the lot lines that separate these parcels. So, as a result of deeding those small pieces, well, small in one case, a little bit larger in another, to the adjacent properties, this is the resulting look of the, uh, of the three lots as a result. The drainage easement, uh, along Mirror Lake, that would remain. There would be a 10-foot access easement created along the north lot line here that would provide the existing house at 5239 that would allow them access, pedestrian access down to the lake itself. The, um, when looking at the median lot sizes in the area, the, the lots, as we saw on an earlier slide, are quite larger than all of the lots within the area. So, they, all three of them continue to exceed the medians. The existing lot at 6,008 here is non-conforming. It's only 95 feet in width. That width wouldn't remain, so it would continue to exist as a non-conforming lot in terms of width. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of the lot division as requested by the applicant.
Questions of staff? Carrie, maybe you've had some discussion with the property owner, but I can't for the life of me figure out why in the world anybody would want to do this. Do you have any idea what the, what the reasoning is behind this?
Um, I, I don't know the exact detail of the, the circumstances on why this has come about, but the three of them have got together and, um, decided this is what they'd like to do. The, the lot to the south gains quite a bit on lakeshore in terms of access to Mirror Lake. The, the property at 5239 becomes quite a bit smaller. Still a large lot when compared to other lots within this area. They would still maintain pedestrian access down to the lake, but they wouldn't have, their property wouldn't touch Mirror Lake.
Other questions of staff? Commissioner Scher?
So, so we're not aware of any impending building plans or anything?
No. I, um, from what they've indicated to me, none of the three intend to, um, make any additions to any of their homes.
Other questions of staff? Thank you. Discussion? Makes, makes a lot less sense, though. I'll move approval based on the findings in the staff report. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, reports, recommendations. Mr. Staunton?
Uh, Mr. Chair and members of the commission just wanted to report in on the status of the Grand View District Small Area Planning Process. We are moving toward, um, some conclusion to that planning process. Hallelujah. We have a meeting scheduled for the 19th of January with the Steering Committee, and the goal at that meeting is to try to finalize a draft of the small area plan that then we will go through the, uh, the public hearing process for the purpose of amending the comprehensive plan, to include that plan in the comprehensive plan. I have- I have spoken with the chair and with Carrie to, to get a time on the planning commission calendar and we have set up a public hearing for the 22nd of February and we'll be getting notice out on that and letting folks know. But anybody that you know who's interested in this, make sure that, that they're aware of that. We're going to have a 45-day public comment period, kind of straddling that public hearing. So it'll open on the 25th of January and close on the 9th of March. And then the plan is to bring it to the city council on the 17th of April. So I think we're, we're quite pleased with the progress we've made. It's been a lot of hard work. It's been a great community-led effort with a 52-member steering committee and lots and lots of community effort that's gone into this and, and we're looking forward to sharing it with the planning commission and the rest of the public.
The Steering Committee meeting on the 19th, I assume people can attend that if they wish?
Yes, people are welcome. It's going to be at the Grange Hall, which is just across the street here. Kind of, kind of a throwback venue to, can imagine yourself back in the city hall of the 1930s or 20s. So it should be a nice place to have a meeting. Seven o'clock.
So seven o'clock on the 19th, the Steering Committee meeting at the Grange Hall. Public hearing before the planning commission on February 22nd. Public comment period from January 25th through March 9th and expected to take the matter to the council on April 17th. Thank you. Other reports? Correspondence and petitions, we all received council connection. Chair and commission member comments. Anybody wish to make a comment for the good of the order? Okay, no more comments. Staff comments? Carrie?
I do have a couple brief. I noticed that in our council connection, there wasn't mention of the ordinance work that the planning commission had recommended a couple of meetings ago. And just to let you know that the council approved both the site plan ordinance and the utility ordinance as written. There were no changes. So we will move ahead with those. So nice work on both of those projects.
Very good. Very good. Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.